Eduardo.
Councilmember Schneider.
Present.
Councilmember Holliver.
Present.
Councilmember Fun.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pappen.
Here.
Mayor Oliva.
Here.
All members.
Sorry.
Council are present.
Thank you, Eduardo. Councilmember Schneider, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
Sure. If everyone could please join me in standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we have no ceremonial presentation, so I'd like to go right to the agenda overview. City manager.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Tom Williams, city manager. Next on the agenda, we have the agenda overview, which is our standard items. It includes calendar of events, reports of bills and claims, and a report out of the February 4th, 2022 closed session. Item number three is approval of meeting minutes for the special meeting of December 8th, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes of December 14th, 2021. Then we move into oral reports from city committee and commission chairs. There are no reports this evening. Then we move into public communication. This is an item on the agenda that anybody from the public that wishes to address the city council on any item not on the agenda can do so. Times are limited to three minutes per speaker. Then moving to the consent calendar, we have three items on the consent calendar, starting with item number five, which is to adopt a resolution finding that the proclaimed state of emergency continues to impact the ability to meet safely in person and declaring that the city council and city commissions and committees will continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. Item number six is the consideration of adoption of a resolution awarding a construction contract to Anderson Pacific Engineering Construction for the sodium hypochlorite system improvements for our sewer system. This, then moving to item number six, that's an action item. Moving to item number seven, the last time on consent is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a community benefits agreement with Millbrae Partners LLC for the Alexandria Center for Life Science Project located at 231 Millbrae Avenue, 620 and 30 Rollins Road, and 201, 230, and 231 Adrian Road. Then we move into the public hearing. We have one item this evening on the public hearing calendar, and that is the transition to district-based elections and dividing the city up into five council districts. Then we move to existing business. We have one item on existing business. That's item number nine, and that is to consider approving the skate park design and renovation project as well as landscaping and lighting for the area around the skate park as well as the new fitness court. We have no business items, then we would move to council comments. Mayor, and then adjournment of the meeting. And that concludes the overview of the agenda. So moving on just real quick to update the council and the community on a few things. I know there's a lot of interest in the Lamita Canal, which is to be maintained by San Francisco International Airport, SFO. We've had meetings with SFO, the neighborhood, to, you know, try to get SFO to clean the canal because it is actually blocking storm flow and stormwater, and it's one of the primary causes for the flooding on landing lane. The good news is Congresswoman Spears' office has gotten involved, so we have a meeting with her staff and SFO staff tomorrow. Then hopefully the outcome will be a plan that we will receive from SFO on a schedule to maintain the Lamita Canal. Also, after a sabbatical due to the pandemic, we are relaunching our Neighborhood Watch program. Been working with Chief Corpus. There will be a meeting regarding Neighborhood Watch as we kick this program back off on February 10th at 6:30 PM. So that's this Thursday night, February 10th, 6:30 PM. It will be a virtual meeting on Zoom. The information and login can be found on the city's website. At the library, we have family storytime every Monday at 10:30 AM. This is an in-person event, but it is held outdoors either in the area of the library plaza or at Central Park or the park where the gazebo is. So all family members, starting from toddlers to adults, are welcome to attend. So please bring your own blanket, seating, chair, some protection, and face mask. The library does require face masks at this event, even though it is outside. So every Monday, 10:30 AM, story, family storytime at the Millbrae Library. So that brings me to, I think, some good news, which was reported today, that after February 15th, California is ending its indoor mask requirement for vaccinated people, but not for schoolchildren and higher-risk areas like public transit, nursing homes, as COVID cases significantly have dropped. So in San Mateo County and across the state, as I mentioned, the COVID cases are dropping. San Mateo County is following the state guidelines here. So in the county itself, the county is aligning with the state, and the decision to lift the indoor mask mandate will take effect throughout San Mateo County on February 15th. So that's for vaccinated people, but the also businesses and organizations will be able to make their own decisions when it comes to masking in their particular business and facility. So that indoor mask mandate, that's good news as cases continue to significantly drop across the state and the county. Then we are launching our AARP Free Tax Assistant Program. So ARP Foundation will provide tax aids, offering free tax preparation and help to anyone if you're the age of 50 or older and cannot afford tax preparation yourself. Appointments are available each Wednesday from February 9th to April 6th. So every Wednesday from February 9th to April 6th. There's no fee, and you know, the service is provided complimentary of AARP, and AARP membership is not required. And then lastly, our elementary school basketball season will be kicking off. It's open to all second through fifth grade students who live in or attend Millbrae schools. Our program emphasizes teamwork, skill development, and active engagement, and it's fun and a safe environment for anyone that would like to participate. Registration can be found on the city's website under our Recreation Department or logging into bit.ly backslash milrec with one L. So that's bit.ly backslash M I L R E C. And Mayor, that, oh, one last thing, and I know, I know, all the council members were there, and we had just one of the best events in the city of Millbrae this past Saturday with the Lunar New Year. There are so many people to thank from the group at Millbrae Cultural Committee, Niwa Chang, Marion Kong, our Public Works crews, you know, led by Craig Centus and Mike Kilagru and all of their staff and crews, Recreation Department, Christina Lopez, Roland Tiano, CCFD. You know, fire was there with the strong force. The sheriff's office was out in force, and it was just a great time. I'd like to thank Eduardo, our acting city clerk, and Jennifer Lim from our office, who manned the city booth on this redistricting item that we have as a public hearing later on this evening. It was a great team effort, and it was really nice to see how so many people just enjoyed the day. So my hat's off to everybody involved. It was a great event. And I know the council will probably have some comments later on in the meeting. So thank you to everyone for that. And Mayor, that concludes my update.
That was an updated update. That was like uplifting update. Very nice. Thank you very much. Good stuff to report. With that being said, I'd like to have the city attorney to report on any action that was taken on the February 4th closed session, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The council met Friday afternoon, February 4th, at a personnel closed session to discuss the performance evaluation of the city manager. I have no action to report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item number three with the approval of the minutes. Do we have any council that would like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Somebody's second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Can we take a vote?
Councilmember Schneider.
I.
Councilmember Holliver.
I.
Councilmember Fun.
I.
Vice Mayor Pappen.
I.
Mayor Oliva.
I.
The city council approves a special meeting minutes of December 8th, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes of December 14th, 2021 by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is our oral reports. We have no oral reports tonight, and so we'll move to public comments. With anything that is not on the agenda, do we have anybody that would like to speak with something that is not on the agenda tonight? Acting City Clerk, I don't see any hands up. Do you?
I do not.
Great. Then I will go to consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve number five, six, and seven on the consent calendar? And I'm not going to read it because
Yeah, it says zero. I don't know.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we read them very quickly, Madam Mayor?
Can I, can I go ahead? Is there somebody else? I'm going to go with number five, adoption of a resolution finding that the proclaimed state of emergency continues to impact the ability to meet safety in person and declaring the city council and city commissions and committees will continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. Number six, to adopt a resolution rewarding awarding a construction contract to the Anderson Pacific Engineering Construction, Inc. for the sodium hydrochloride system improvements redesign project. And number seven, a resolution authorizing the city managers to execute a community benefits agreement with Millbrae Partners LLC for the Alexandria Center for Life Science Projects located at 231 Millbrae Avenue, 620 and 30 Rollins Road, and 201, 230, and 231 Adrian. That is on the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve from our council? Motion to approve? Mayor, sorry. Motion to approve? Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Schneider, and we have a second from Councilmember Holliver. May we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Schneider.
I.
Councilmember Holliver.
I.
Councilmember Fun.
I.
Vice Mayor Pappen.
I.
Mayor Oliva.
I.
The city council approves a consent calendar by a vote of five to zero.
Does a dog's vote count?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You guys voted on number five. All right. So with that, I'm going to move to public hearing, and I'd like to open up the public hearing. And that's for anybody who wants to speak on this matter will be heard when we, actually, I think we're going to probably hear from the public first prior to council comments. But prior to that, I want to make sure that everybody understands that there is interpretation services available in both Mandarin and Spanish. And Acting City Clerk, could you please introduce our Mandarin and our Spanish interpreters?
Yes, thank you very much. So we do have translation services available in Mandarin and in Spanish. Can I please ask our Mandarin translator to please notify the public on how they can access Mandarin translation services this evening? Thank you very much, Ting. Can I please ask our Spanish translator to please notify the public on how they can access Spanish translation services? Thank you very much, Javier. Mayor, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you very much. So what I'd like to do with council consent is we'd like to hear from the public, if that's okay with council?
Mayor, we also have a staff presentation. Mr. Paul Mitchell.
I'm sorry, is Paul going to do that?
Yeah, yeah, he's a pretty in-depth presentation. And before I introduce Mr. Mitchell from Redistricting Partners, who's been great in helping us through this, by the way, I mean, just terrific team at Redistricting Partners. We've received a total of 26 maps and 60 community of interest forms. So a lot of information that has come in from our community, which is fantastic. Paul is earning his money from us, and so a presentation from Mr. Mitchell, trying to pull everything together, get our communities of interest, and with the objective, knowing that we have a looming legal deadline, to try to get this narrowed down to, you know, the top one, two, you know, no more than three maps as a goal for this evening. So if you don't have any questions for me, I'd like to introduce Mr. Paul Mitchell from Redistricting Partners.
Just a little comment before he gets, before Paul gets started. Is everybody getting, okay, can everybody hear? Because I'm getting a lot of feedback, so I'm going to mute. And if everybody else can mute other than Paul, that would probably help the situation here.
Thank you very much, and it's great to be here today. Really have enjoyed working with your staff, and it was correct to say that it's not just my work, but it's our staff, and a number of us have been working on this, and really happy to be working with you on this. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and go through a presentation that will be thorough. We'll be showing a lot of maps, so we can sit back and just kind of let those wash over us as we are looking at these numbers of public submissions. And there is a lot of community engagement. It feels great to hear from Tom and other clients who have the experience of a lot of public engagement, a lot of the public knowing about the process, and then getting to see the ways, sometimes rather creative ways, that the community will draw these maps. I'll go ahead and share my screen. I presume you can see that?
Yeah, Paul, we can see it.
So first off, especially since you're likely to have some people maybe who are first actually watching the hearing and engaging this process. Redistricting is a decennial practice. Going to districts for the first time follows a lot of the same rules as the redistricting process. So we will oftentimes kind of simultaneously talk about that we're doing a districting, but we'll use the rules of redistricting along the way. The traditional criteria for redistricting is based on everything from federal law, like the districts need to be equal size, that's from federal lawsuits, the Voting Rights Act from federal legislation, down to state legislation like the California Voting Rights Act and the Fair Maps Act. And then finally, any local rules that are in place, like if a city charter has a a rule regarding redistricting, and then anything you adopt in addition to those criteria is fine, as long as you're not subjugating those other criteria. Districts need to be equal sized is the number one principle. And the idea with that is that when we're drawing districts, we're saying that each of these areas is going to be able to elect somebody, and that those elected representatives will be representing those people. And if you say had a state with two congressional districts, and one had 100,000 people and one had a million people, you could see that there'd be a complete inequality there. And somebody going to get redressed from their government would have a lot less voting power, representative power in a million-person district. But in that 100,000-person district, it'd be really easy to get access to government. So in order to equalize these in every agency from Congress down to the Water District and everything in between, there needs to be this rebalancing, and that equal size is a key element. Districts need to be contiguous, meaning they need to be whole parts. They need to maintain communities of interest. Now, oftentimes, we talk about those Voting Rights Act communities. That was a real high federal requirement, but a community of interest can be people who share a culture, share a socioeconomic, share, they work in the same industry, they use the same services. And we can talk more about how to use communities of interest in the redistricting process or the districting process. Following boundaries of other agencies, if we were doing like a county redistricting, following the cities, if we're doing a city redistricting, following the neighborhoods, that is an element of the process that both is oftentimes a criteria and also is super helpful in identifying rationale for why districts were drawn. We'll get these comments that say, wait, you drew this thing, and it looks like a little golf club sticking out of a district. Why is that there? And you show them the city boundaries, and the city boundaries make that little golf club. Like, okay, well, then now that makes sense. Without that justification of a city boundary, you might question it. And then keeping districts compact, which doesn't mean small, it means kind of shape-wise and specific to California policy, it means keeping neighborhoods that are next to each other in the same district, not taking a population area, and then driving some circuitous route to go around and merge it with some other faraway population area, bypassing a bunch of nearby areas. That's the new definition under the Fair Maps Act, one that hasn't been adjudicated, but it is the policy under which we're drawing lines now. The plans that have been submitted have included both plans on district and hand submissions. We've looked at these plans as we devise plans as our potential draft plans. In fact, there are cases in these plans that you'll see, like this mentioned in here, of DraftMap F was built out of one of those districter plans. And DraftMap D was built out of one of the hand-drawn plans. They would call that a placemat. It's a a printed-out version that you can kind of draw on. We have a number of plans, and I'm just going to kind of whiz through these to give you kind of a sense of these districts and the differences that we have in each of these plans. You'll see some of these plans have shared kind of viewpoint as to maybe like this one where you have a bunch of districts kind of converging in the middle. It's almost like a wheel. You've got districts going around this kind of more central point. You have other districts that'll utilize major roads and kind of the topographical nature of these districts, areas that are more hillside versus areas that are more urban, you know, transportation-focused. Some of these districts have elements that we will tell you make them not really eligible at this point for you to adopt in their current fashion. Like as an example, right here, we have a District Four that technically these two parts of District Four aren't touching. So they have a lack of contiguity. And in order to make this district contiguous, you'd have to take this whole area, which, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's a golf course. You'd have to take that whole area and put that into four. Or, and this is something we could address in the future, if you wanted to, needed to like split a census block to be able to make something contiguous, we could look at that. Eduardo, am I speaking too fast for the translators? I'm okay?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah.
Real quick, okay, that hole that you see there is, no, no, the white one. Okay, that's a high school that's not actually in our district, so it may look not continuous to you, but it's not really a part of the city.
Yeah, and unfortunately, it would be viewed as not contiguous in the law, even though, like you're saying, it is, it might be functionally contiguous, but it also needs to be literally contiguous. So we wouldn't, in order to do this, we'd have to create some bridge underneath the high school to connect them. Even though that high school is the only thing separating the two, this District Four wouldn't be considered contiguous the way it's shaped, the way the census blocks are.
Okay, I see, yeah, because that high school is not in Millbrae. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, it's a, so as we go through these maps, there are a number of districts that you'll start to see have similar themes. You'll see earlier, we'd seen a District Five that looked very similar to this. We'd seen districts that looked very similar to this District One. In this instance, we had two plans that were drawn that were exactly the same. Another district plan that married some of the kind of pinwheel of three districts that are kind of circulating around a focal point, and also having longer districts, and then more of a district going down the coast there. Some of the districter plans that came in had used, I think, the they drew the communities of interest, and they use that tool, so it created more than the number of districts that are eligible. And again, we see districts, some, we talked about this earlier, you know, should districts go stretching the whole way like stripes? Or should they maybe be modified with longer districts, but then also having one district that takes up like this District Two, and earlier that, and that District Two, and this District One, take up more of that top part of the city? These plans are all on the website for people to look at, so we can have any of those kind of brought up and talk about the total plan deviations and look at using them for as potential draft plans. Let me continue to just scroll through these, and I'll get to our lettered plans, which are the draft plans that we've created that are balanced and built on these submissions. We have three plans right now that we, and you have asked to have come back and continue to discuss. And like I said, we can also break open any of those other plans that were from the public submissions. Draft D was based on a hand-drawn map. The hand-drawn map had a 28.9% deviation, so we modified it in order to bring it in. This is what the draft plan looked like when we drew it, but had too much of a deviation. And so to balance it, we made some changes here in four and five and three. We kept one and two exactly the same, but we made those modifications to make that plan be within deviation. When we look at all of our plans, we're going to have these data tables that have a top and bottom part. The top part is the total plan population from the decennial census, like the once-every-10-year census. The bottom dataset is from a estimated dataset from the census called the American Community Survey, and it's specifically a special tabulation they do for the Department of Justice and for Voting Rights Act, and it looks at the citizen voting age population. The the total plan deviation here is 8.3%. And that's within the 10% range. DraftMap E was based on COI submissions, community of interest submissions, and it also meets those criteria of being equal population based on what we kind of built for you from all these different draft plans. And you can see some description of what is comprising each of these districts. Bayside in one, Mills Estates largely in two, Millbrae Highlands and Glenview Highlands being in different districts, and most of Central Millbrae in District Five. Some of the challenges in that are population, and others are just the shape of the census blocks. So this is what DraftPlan E looks like. Total population deviation of 7.5%, which again is within the 10% range. And I've said it before, but essentially that 10% range needs to be thought of as a threshold test. You're either in, within that 10% or you're not within that 10%. You don't really get like a gold star for being at, you know, 7% instead of 9% or 2% instead of 7%. It's just, are you under the 10% number? DraftMap F was based on this public submission 101707. Has a total deviation of 8.2%. And you can see the little bit different construction of this plan. And you can see the little bit different construction of this plan. And that was from the public submission. And this is our version that was just modified. I think maybe just a little technical modification where they didn't take in some areas with like zero census block population areas. So this is Draft Plan F, a total plan deviation of 8.2%. And where we're at is you can go from here and identify preferred plans. We can still suggest potential changes, and then the idea is to get these back out into the public space. And if there are some of these draft plans that were from the earlier district submissions that you want to have elevated to be a draft plan, what I would suggest is you could identify one of those and you could say, you know, this plan that's district or number such and such or submitted by so-and-so. I want to make that plan, you know, District Plan G. And then we would make that G and the next one could be H or whatever. And your process is one, it's an iterative process of potentially like expanding the number of plans you're going to consider and then starting to whittle away and funnel down to, you know, one or maybe two plans that you're going to actually put eventually on an agenda to be your final draft plan. And then when you do that, you'll be identifying the plan you're adopting, coming up with a sequencing, like which districts are going to come up in what election years, and you'll be all ready to adopt that as a final up or down vote at your final hearing.
Councilmember Snyder has a question, if you don't mind, please.
You had asked, Mayor, you had asked earlier about going straight to public comment before council. I would prefer that council get to have a few questions upfront, because in the previous two, we really haven't. And I spent a heck of a lot of time going through all the public question, maps. And I'd just like a couple of things clarified before we dive into the maps themselves. But if I'm the only one, I just, I mean, we got less than a minute at the last hearing for council to speak.
Fair enough. I, yeah, and that's why we, you know, we've, we've actually put this as just about everything on the agenda tonight, because we got, we didn't quite have enough time at the last meeting, at the workshop, I should say. So Paul, are you finished with your presentation?
Yeah.
And so Councilmember Snyder, I'm going to let you start, and then if council wants to wait and listen to public comment first, then we'll come back to council. How's that?
Okay. Thank you. All right, first to the public. Thank you. That was a lot of maps to go through. It took me a while, and I say this because I have a degree in geography, I have made maps. But it took me quite a while to figure out how to compare all of the public maps, let alone A through F on there. And what I found in general was the problem of not counting the Gateway Project, which the city manager and I've talked about, and hopefully Paul will address that, that some census tracts are causing some really weird little carve-outs for neighborhoods that should be considered together. And I've got a list of those, rather than taking up a lot of public time, I can draft them up. A good example is how the 0 to 100 blocks of Palm, Ashton, Hazel are carved out and stuck into Mills Estates when they have nothing to do with Mills Estates, when they should be part of Highlands, as an example, and I'm guessing that that's, that's that. The other problem I had when I, you know, the first maps pretty much kept Meadows as one neighborhood, but all of the maps really did a lot of different changes in Meadows that tended to move the line over to either Hillcrest or Aura Vista. And in many cases, this is what I didn't know when I'm reading the maps. If you look at a huge number of them, the demarcation line between what would be Mills Estates and what would be Meadows is right at Aura Vista, which is a one-lade road with houses on the south side of the road. So if the line is right there at Aura Vista, are they in Mills Estate? Or are they in Meadows? And I couldn't tell from the data on that. And that concerns me, because to me Aura Vista is a part of the Upper Highlands neighborhood and, and actually has a whole canyon between it and Millbrae Avenue. So I didn't know how to look at those maps that way. Again, I feel for the neighborhoods along Broadway and Magnolia around Cappuccino High School, because it seems to me different maps threw them in to make the population numbers, whether or not that neighborhood had any relationship to where they were getting parked into. So those are just kind of my overarching kind of feels for that. Almost every map, and I really didn't do it for A through F, took existing neighborhoods and carved them up. Some were really bad, like Meadow Glen is carved up into three different places. Green Hills is carved into two different places. In One, Millwood itself, it is a neighborhood, but it's carved into two. And there was one neighborhood, well, mine, neighborhood often carved into three, sometimes four different neighborhoods on that. So I'm a little concerned about neighborhood cohesiveness on that. So those are kind of my overarching comments, but really and truly, it was hard to figure out what was in and what was out on those streets that are on the border, and a lot of them are up in our canyons. I can pretty much guess when Helen Drive was the line, that the north side was in that district up to the north and the south side was getting merged in with Meadow Glen and whichever configuration, whether it was up with Telegraph or down with Highlands on that. So could you clarify the streets? Please clarify the streets and the numbers, because I really think if we can count Gateway and potentially the Anton Project, it will allow parts of Magnolia and Broadway to be with the neighborhood that they're really the part of.
Councilmember Snyder, I think, I think we've, we've answered that question a couple of times about counting Gate. We cannot anticipate-
No, but that's not true. It's actually been clarified, Mayor. Sorry. It's not true. We can, to a degree, count them in the numbers. I ran the numbers. I looked at the numbers for my favorite maps and said, wow, if you just move 400 here, because there are at least 400 units coming up this summer. So one person per unit, which we know there'll be more than one person, but one person per unit, those homes along Paramount or Magnolia could be part of the neighborhood that they truly are a part of and not just jumped into the east side.
Let me clarify on that, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And so we have the rank criteria that we have to follow. After the rank criteria, you can add additional criteria. That's at least how the Fair Maps Act and is being interpreted right now. And so if you wanted to add to the criteria after all the rank criteria, hey, we really want to make sure we're aware of where there's going to be future population growth and try to adjust for that. You can do that, but only to a point. And that point is you have a total 10% plan deviation. And you can say, well, we're going to make that district a little scotch underpopulated and make the other districts a little bit overpopulated, all still within that 10% deviation in order to accommodate that, but you can't go outside the 10% deviation. It can just be a rationale. And one of the things I'll, I'll caution you is that oftentimes we get to the end of the map, and that was maybe something that was thought about at the beginning. And in the end, you're like, well, to make that change, we'd have to change all four of these other districts or these three other districts so dramatically, I don't want to do it anymore. But it is something that you can have as a additional criteria. It just can't be a primary criterion. It can't go over 10%.
Right. Well, and I ran some of the numbers on a couple of the maps just to see what might happen and how actually all five districts would tweak a little bit to keep the numbers in there that actually might help keep some neighborhoods that have been divided whole on that. And we just haven't been able to dive into that level to see how we might be able to do that. If we know that those 400 units are going to start putting people in them in July, our population is going to grow significantly starting in July. So that, those are my comments to get in beforehand.
Did you have any more questions, Councilmember Snyder?
I have lots of questions, but those were the main one. The Aura Vista, Hillcrest, which on a lot of maps bounced back and forth, that's what created that little golf club shape on a, on a number of these. Well, more on the public maps. Nope, there's kind of the shape. Where are those houses going to fall? Aura Vista is the example. Maybe none of the A through F are on Aura Vista. The scale is harder to see, actually, on the A through Fs. It's harder to find the street names.
And you do have the web map links for those?
I did, I did, and I spent hours going through them and opening them and trying to figure out the streets and then trying to figure out the logic of whether it's a census tract or just a street. But again, Aura Vista is probably the best one, and maybe that's not in any of these, A through F.
So Councilmember Snyder, not to put you on the spot, you don't have to answer this, but I'm just curious myself. If you were to pick a map to work with, which one would you be working with at this time?
I like the Amy Map one. I liked, I thought 103586 with some tweaking is a possibility. And 101707, it could almost balance out if 500 Poplar, the big condominium complex, was moved slightly. I don't, and then I didn't really grade A through F. I really spent a heck of a lot of time with the public submissions.
Thank you.
To be honest, Councilwoman, Mayor, I'm sorry. I, to the best degree possible, I want us to keep our neighborhoods together, whatever they are, wherever they are in town, to try to keep them together. And my gut feeling on most of these is that the Highlands neighborhood was the one that was more often shunted into almost every, every map divided Highlands up into different ways.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of-
And that hurts.
We don't have a lot of acreage to work with here.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, I grew up in Meadows. I also thought it was weird to split Meadows by Larkspur.
Okay, so you have, you have your top three that you mentioned, and I'm not, I'm not going to hold you to. I just, we're trying to, you know, narrow it down a little bit here. So it's important to hear what your top three were without looking at A through F, right?
Correct.
Thank you. So Councilmember Snyder, council, would it be okay if we went to public comment at this time?
Again, still haven't gotten an answer for Aura Vista.
Okay, sorry. Let's get that answer.
I can, here, I'll give you one map. Let me see where I wrote notes. The other example is Larkspur. Many of the Meadows, I thought Meadows would stay intact, but so many of the maps divided Meadows.
Paul, do you have an answer for Aura Vista for Councilmember Snyder?
So what I was going to do was go into the actual mapping software and then I'm looking to see what plan I might want to bring up to do that. Maybe I'll just start with F and I'll just open this up. And we can go ahead and look. You can direct me where you want me to. Sorry, it's just going to take a second. Where you want me to look, and then we can start clicking on census blocks to see how much those, because you're going to see this thing that happens where, and I think you've already seen this. You click on a census block and it's like three cul-de-sacs in one census block for no reason. And it can be frustrating, but that's just the way that they are laid out. So let me just set this up-
It's one of the maps that basically the west side of Millbrae, you know, sometimes Mills Estate went through and globbed on to Upper Highlands, and sometimes it was Meadows Crest View and that would grab onto Upper Highlands. So they, the lines board changed on quite a few of them.
Yeah. Let me go ahead and set this up so we can look.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to find my notes to see one that says Aura Vista as a question. For anybody watching, it's a marvelous street. It's one of my favorite in Millbrae. And I worry about how we evacuate them.
Yeah. Paul, do you, do you want me to take some public comment or, and then we could-
Yeah, maybe we come back while you're doing public comment.
Okay.
Setting this up so I can do that.
That's cool. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay with that, Councilmember Snyder?
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Okay, so we'll open it up to public comment, and I see Alice Quong is, has her hand raised?
Is it my turn?
It's all yours, Alice.
Oh, yes. Hi, Happy New Year, and thank you all for the hardworking. Best wishes for you all the coming year and Chinese New Year. Anyway, I think my third time to participate for this type of hearing. And I thought this all the purpose is for political reason, is not for financial, is not for any other reasons. So no matter what, it may not be a good fit for our city. And based on our even, our Councilwoman Snyder is major for geography, and even she have a hard time to read them all. How about our electoral residents? It's difficult. But I don't like for the map drop by life for sample. I live in Clearfield, and one Clearfield belong to one council relation. I don't like that, because we used to have a culture in my body. Anyone can talk to our, any other council person. It doesn't demand, doesn't, doesn't matter like any is in that area or Snyder is in another area. It doesn't matter. We are free to talk to any council person. So for my personal opinion, I really like the map, even though in the same street, but can divide it to four or five election area. So in the future day, if my should have anything, and then we can have all the council pay attention to. So that's a super benefit than one street for only target for one council election. And that's not a smart way. And I thought that once we spend a lot of energy and things time to decide this, it's so hard to change in the future. So I saw in this moment, my personal opinion, I really like the one 104A. And that's something like for my, even though I have a limiting knowledge for the geography, but I thought that will be more benefit for our voting in the future. Because that's purely for political and no choice. But we still want to choose something best for our best benefit for the people living here as a voter. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Nathan, you're up.
Hi, yes, thanks for the opportunity to address you on this important issue tonight. I wanted to talk about three maps that I think would be worthwhile for the council to take another look at. I think Draft Map S submitted by the consultant is a really good foundation to build upon, but I do want to suggest at least two other maps that the council might be willing to look at. So one is Draft Map 109516 that I put together. It kind of also tries to keep a lot of neighborhoods together. In particular, it does something a little bit different with the Millwood neighborhood, which I'd see on a lot of maps generally gets put in with the east of El Camino side. So that might be something to look at if keeping Millwood together as a neighborhood is something that you should, are interested in. I also would like to suggest looking at Draft Map 110549. This is a sort of modification of Draft Map S that I worked on with the original author of Draft Map S when it was District R Community Map, Jean Wong. I think we tried our best to take some of the best ideas of Draft Map S while also making some modifications like in the original Draft Map S, Richmond Drive is divided into two. This is one of the only areas in Millbrae that has apartment buildings and therefore a high concentration of renters. So we thought it would be, we could try to keep both sides of Richmond Drive together to protect that and empower that community of interest. So one more time, I think the council should look into Draft Map S, District R Map 109516 and District R Map 110549. I think each of these has slightly different interpretations of how to meet the community of interest and districting challenge, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nathan. Joe, Terese?
Thank you. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to address you. I would like to reiterate one more time, I'm, I'm the author of the map that was shown by Mr. Mitchell that is not contiguous because of the area around Cappuccino High School. And I understand that, that because of that gap, that the map I actually drew wouldn't qualify. But I think with a small tweak of adding a few land parcels that would connect those pieces that are not connected would make my map an effective representation of the city. I think my map does a good job of keeping neighborhoods intact. And it has the unique attribute that it aggregates the apartment area along Richmond Drive with the east of El Camino areas, which I feel might have might serve as a community of interest in that there's probably a higher percentage of renters in that area that would be then aggregated with the renters and the apartments along Richmond Drive. So I realized that the map as presented wouldn't work. But I think with a slight tweak and a slight breakup of one of the census tracts, that it could be corrected and made into a very effective and representative map. So thank you for considering it. It's number 101627 is the map number that is mine, and that was presented earlier by Mr. Mitchell. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Madam Mayor, real quick?
Yes.
For Mr. Teresi and Mr. Mitchell, so part of the high school parking lot is in Millbrae. If it helps make the connection to make Mr. Teresi's map more acceptable there. I just don't know exactly where you drew the line, but evidently the parking lot is in Millbrae, and it might just pull it together as required. Just a thought.
Vice Mayor, how about if we listen to the rest of public comment, and we'll bring up Joe Teresi's map? So Jean Wong, please.
Good evening, Mayor Leiva and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The three maps I support are map F, which I drew, map number 109516, which was authored by Nathan Chan, and number 110549, which is, as Nathan indicated earlier, a kind of a melding of map F and 109516. So when Nathan and I learned that our top two choices were the same, we shared our ideas and created the new map 110549 so that it captured the best features of the two maps. I have four reasons to support these three maps. One is that the new districts align to the extent possible the major current neighborhood boundaries. Many residents identify their current neighborhoods as their community of interest. So it's important to recognize this fact and join the new districts. The reason number two, create, these maps create a new district that encompasses the Bayside Manor, Marina Vista Airport, Park Neighborhoods, the east of El Camino. And I noticed that many of the maps submitted included these areas into a single district. So I believe that there's a strong support by residents to create this new district. And reason number three, each district shares border with the Al Camino Broadway downtown corridor that runs through Millbrae. So I believe that the shared border will ensure that all five council members will always have a vested interest in this corridor. And then lastly, number four, the ratio of Asian to white voting age population in each of the districts balanced in such a way that there's just one district that can be considered a majority minority district. So I urge districting partners to include the three maps to be considered for the top three, so to be selected for council's consideration. And I hope council will support and adopt one of these maps by which Millbrae will be able to create the new districts for future council member elections. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jean. Could, if there's no other public comment, could we possibly bring up Joe Teresi's? I don't know the number. I didn't write it down. Map with, the one that has cappuccino?
It's a 101627.
Thank you, Joe.
So I have, I had brought that up, and bring it up again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it right here. So I'm gonna go ahead and do something I generally don't do, and that's gonna be share my whole screen. Let me do a couple of things real quick so that just turn off my notifications real quick so that it doesn't show, like if I get some email. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my whole screen so I can show his map, and then I can show that area where it would connect, and then we can discuss how that would be achieved. Hopefully, this is not too, doesn't make everything too small. But first off, I hope you can see his plan here. And the issue with this plan is this area here that is not technically connected. And then secondly, this area here that's not connected. Now, this area here that's not connected in the northern portion, we can't do anything about that. Because unless you want to pass an emergency motion to annex this street intersection, there's nothing we can do. On this area down here, we could theoretically create a census block split to join together these areas. The issue is the state law prohibits districts from being considered contiguous if they're only point contiguous by like two census blocks really just touching. You would want to have more of a substantial area there that you're bringing in. And so then that begs the question, what would that area look like? And if we go to the mapping software, and we actually view it, I hope that you can see this okay. If we actually view that map and look at where it is, hold on a second. The area we're talking about is this area right here. It is Barcelona Drive, the area right below the high school. And it is residential. So you can see Barcelona Drive itself is not populated, obviously. The street isn't. This northern side of the street is not part of the city. The southern part of the street is part of the city. And so we could take this area over here that is in his district, and this area here that's in his district, and literally bridge across by taking these area, this area here. That, we can't just use the census blocks, because let me show you how big this census block is. This census block is that big. It's enormous. It takes in population on all sides. It has 860 or 838 people in it. So we can't take that whole census block and add it because it would make the deviation on his district too large. But we could, kind of after the redistricting process is near completion, once you've selected a final plan, if his plan was the final plan, we could come to you with a version where we would take, you know, an area here and put it into the district to create a bridge and create a split census block. Now, when we do this, one of the challenges is that we've kind of broken the data set that tells us how many people are in each district. And we can make a educated guess, or make a more than educated guess, but we can make a justified kind of calculation to say that now these districts are still within deviation because we only took one small population area to create that bridge. But our plans, raw data tables wouldn't necessarily be 100% accurate anymore. So that's one of the real concerns about bridging or splitting census blocks, especially when you're splitting them in populated areas, is that you are, you know, breaking the data set and making it kind of impossible to know the exact census data for those new, for each of the new districts. So that's one reason also why we generally do it at the very end. So we don't have to worry about that until we have a conversation with you and the city manager, run it by the attorneys, make sure everybody's okay with how we calculate what the deviations are in all these districts now that we have technically broken up that census data. It's just a, it's something that is rarely done. We rarely do it. And when we have done it, it would generally be either to fix a broken city boundary where the city boundary doesn't actually follow the census, so we need to split a census block in order to get the whole city into a district, or to fix something that is, you know, stopping a district from crossing a railroad tracking track for no reason or something like that. Using it to bridge like this is not impossible, but it is something we want to make sure we did right.
Thank you, Paul. I'd like to say thank you. I understand now, but I can't really say that. It's very complicated, super complicated. Vice Mayor Papin, does that help you with that island of cappuccino in the middle of Millbrae?
Oh, I was just trying to help the process.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that very much. I'm gonna, I see Jake has a hand up, and I'm gonna go to Joe Teresi one more time, Joe, because we're kind of talking about you. So if you don't mind to.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to add that I appreciate that the way Mr. Mitchell explained what would have to be done. And looking at the map, it looks to me like, you know, we could close that gap with an addition of, you know, probably like, like 25 to 30 parcels along the south side of Cappuccino Avenue, and then on the section of Millwood Drive between Barcelona Drive and the golf course, I would think it could be less than 30 parcels. So it would be a very small change that would be necessary to make the area contiguous. And I think we can afford to do that because my map has a deviation of only 2.5%. So I think, you know, if we changed about 30 parcels, even though it wouldn't be exact, I think we're well within that 10% maximum level of deviation. Thank you.
I will add, if it's helpful, that, like I said, I generally don't like splitting census blocks, except in extraordinary cases. But the way that it's being articulated is about protecting communities of interest, about achieving those higher ranked criteria. It's not like somebody's saying, I want to split a census block because I really want to have that Mexican restaurant I love in my district. It's not something like that. It is something that's from a, you know, trying to achieve those rank criteria that are so important.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna go to Jake. I think he'll be our last public comment. And Councilmember Schneider, I know your hand's been up a couple of times, so I'm gonna hit that, and we'll go to the rest of council after Jake. Thank you, Jake.
Michelle, thank you for taking the time to explain all of this. And as, as I continue to look at it and look at all these additional maps, I, I just, I find a key thing that was mentioned kind of at the outset of tonight was, you know, a big part of all of this is trying to prevent, you know, any kind of gerrymandering or anything that appears to be that way. And, you know, and I think the real key way to do it was laid out with all, you know, with the equal size and having it be contiguous and all of those things. But I think most importantly, what a lot of people are mentioning is the fact that we really want to maintain our communities of interest and maintain our neighborhoods. And the way we do that is by, I think, you know, ultimately, having those, as the terminology is used, was keeping those districts compact and appearance. And so if you look at like map D, and then the other map that's got mentioned a lot tonight, 109516, I think those maps achieve that. And, you know, really at the forefront, we have to consider the neighborhoods. That's so important, if, you know, because we have to do this, right? I mean, one could debate whether or not we should, but it's going to happen, and we need, we need it to happen. But if that's the case, then, you know, the neighborhood representation is so critical. And so, you know, I urge you to please, you know, avoid, you know, maps like F and even 110549, which have all kinds of strips and things like that, that to me appear to be somewhat like a gerrymander type of appearance. And so look at map D, map 109516. The map I submitted, which was up a couple of weeks ago, but it seems to have disappeared 102569. Any of those, I think, are important, where you're really, you know, looking at the communities, look what's important to the people that reside in those areas, because there are differences for, you know, those that are in multifamily areas versus those in single-family residential, those that are in areas with high amounts of traffic, those areas which are not high amounts of traffic. All, you know, a number of different, different things. And so if we are going to have district representation, it really should represent the neighborhoods. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, so there is, doesn't appear to have the Zoom thing, I hope. I'm not missing anybody in the public. I'd like to go to council comments. If that's okay with everybody. Eduardo, am I missing anybody?
No, Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone with their hands raised.
Perfect. Okay, so I'm gonna open it up to council comments, and I don't want to put anybody on the hot seat, but is there anybody that would like, there we go, Councilmember Feng, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's just make it easy, just so someone could get started with it. So I think the way I review all these maps and consider how districting should be achieved in Millbrae. Yeah, I think one of the key goals here is to see how we can achieve more diversity and inclusivity in our city.
Can we get some people muted, please?
Hold on, let me, hold on one second, just give me a second.
I don't think it was you, Anders. I think there was other people.
All right, let me try that again. Is that better?
It's perfect, Anders.
All right, thank you. I think one of the key goals here is to how to achieve more diversity and inclusivity in our city council representation. It's one of the key goals in CDR, right? So, you know, maintaining well-established communities of interest, you know, such as the Meadows, the Cappuccinos, the Bayside Manor, Mills Estate, you know, part of the Highland that tends to be more walkable and closer to downtown versus, you know, also the upper and Glenview Highland that is up the hill a bit. You know, which shares some of the common interests like views and traffic pattern. Those are some of the examples of well-established community of interest that, you know, we need to take, you know, consider carefully as we determine our district maps. And I think, you know, we need to create well-established and well-balanced districts in terms of population. So minimizing the population deviation, I think it's important, as Paul rightfully pointed out at the beginning of his presentation. It's one of the priorities. And we understand that there are a lot of changes would be coming to our downtown business district, you know, especially Broadway, El Camino Real, the transit station area, and how to ensure that our community of interest, the business community of interest, is properly and adequately represented. And our east side, right, has a tremendous growth opportunity, as many have talked about in previous meetings, and lots of changes are anticipated. So we need to ensure that our east side has its fair share representations as well. So, you know, through all the maps that I have looked at, all the public, you know, community submitted map and all the draft map from the districting partners, thank you, by the way, Paul, for all the hard work that you guys put in. You know, I think based on the criteria that I have discussed a little bit earlier, there's one map that I see, you know, that most of the criteria, and that's 11061, oh, 110, let's get the number right. 110484, and that's in the public gallery. So Eduardo, if you can help bring that up?
Give me one second, I'll bring it up.
Take your time, Eduardo. Thank you. I didn't mean to spring that up.
I was gonna say, maybe Paul has it quicker.
Paul, you muted.
Mayor?
Yes.
While they're looking for that? I don't, I spent all day on the website yesterday. I don't have either 110, the one that Nathan mentioned, 549, or the one that Councilman Feng just mentioned.
So I'm, I think you're right. I, I think that as city manager.
We're both added today.
Yeah, a couple, a couple were added today.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did not look at those added today.
They're up now.
Perfect. We'll do it now. Perfect, we'll do it now. Yeah, you're correct, Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you.
Alright, Eduardo, if you can help bring that up.
That was one, one, zero, four, eight, four?
Yes.
Can you guys see my screen here?
Yep, perfectly fine, thank you. So, um, you know, as I look at this map, I mean, this map vaguely resembled a draft map C from redistricting partners, except that, you know, this map actually uses Millbrae Avenue as a sort of a natural dividing line. If you, you know, sort of pay attention between the green and the yellow portion, uh, upper part of it, Eduardo. Upper as in up the hill, you're, you're, there you go, that's it. Yeah, that's Millbrae Avenue. Um, and, and was able to maintain the community of interest of Mills Estate, you know, within sort of, uh, if you can put the numbers on there as well, so it'll be a little easier to go to, you know, the, the, the pen icon on the upper right-hand corner, there you go. I think you can say, you can.
Hit data layers tab and then uh, this should show numbered for painted districts, the checkbox above there.
Second checkbox, oops.
Yeah, there you go.
Alright, perfect. So as you can see that, you know, that's, you know, the whole Mills Estate, it's, you know, community of interest of Mills Estate. It's now within this D two yellow portion. It encompasses the entire community of interest in Basai Manor is D five in purple. You know, most of the Highlands in D four, Glendews and Upper Highlands in D three, uh, Meadows and the Cappuccino in D one. So it offers an opportunity for, you know, three council members to represent our business communities and sort of, you know, dividing up as northern, the central and the southern part of our El Camino Real and Broadway. So the business communities that would be properly represented there are the three council members. Um, it also provides the opportunity to elect as many as three council members living in the east side of El Camino Real to represent our city. So, you know, the maximum deviation of the population is as low as two point seven, six percent. If you go back and show the uh, population, there you go, that's it. Lower right-hand, yeah, there you go, two point seven, six percent. So it's, as you can see, the, the distributions of population amount five district is relatively even uh, among all the maps submitted. And I went through quite a bit of those maps, both publicly submitted as well as those created by the districting partner. This one, two point seven, six percent. It's among one of the lowest in terms of deviations. Uh, it creates a district five, which is in purple, uh, has one of the highest concentration as much as twenty point three percent Hispanic populations. If you go to look at evaluation. There you are, and uh, yeah, uh, yeah, if you, and if you go ahead and expand both. Yep, that's it. So there's a, a twenty point three percent Hispanic population. It gives us a great opportunity to elect council members to represent the Hispanic community. Uh, it also creates district two, district four, and district five as minority, majority districts, where the voting age populations, Asians and pop, and then Hispanic together are over fifty percent, which gives our city very good opportunities to elect leaders to represent the communities of color. Uh, the station area will be evenly represented by D two and D five, I think both the yellow and the purple, which gives the station area its fair share of representations and attentions based on the future growth and the development opportunity that we anticipated there. Um, now D five has a slightly smaller population compared to the others. Uh, go back and look at the population again, Eduardo. Yeah, it's about forty-five hundred fifty-three, so it's slightly smaller, uh, which, you know, obviously anticipation of, you know, TOD two coming up online relatively soon, so that should help make up some of the population differences later on. So all in all, I think this particular map is a relatively balanced map in my view. Uh, it achieves the spirit and the intent of CBR, as I view it. Thanks, Matt.
Very good homework. That was a, a pretty amazing. Do what, can we name that map something other than a number?
Yeah, if there's a consensus from the council or if you direct staff, um, any of these plans that are publicly identified plans can just kind of enter the queue as the letters. And I think we have an F, so the next one would be G.
Thank you. Can we call that G so we, so we don't get confused on all these numbers, please? Is everybody okay with that?
And that's one, one, zero, four, eight, four.
So we'll call that G.
I'm sorry, this is Ann. I don't support that map.
Okay.
Haven't really been able to dive into it, but I don't support it. It carves up Highlands, lower Highlands, so no. I, I can call it, you can call it what it is, but I don't support it.
Okay, so let's call it G so we can call whether you support it or anybody else. Just so we, we don't have all these numbers going all over the place.
I think we're just trying to narrow it down.
Yeah.
Nobody's committing to supporting.
Yeah, not support or anything. I want to be able to talk, so we know what we're talking about with all these numbers. Can, so thank you, Councilmember Fung. We, Councilmember Schneider, is your hand still raised or?
I just raised it. If we pulled up another one that just appeared today, can we also pull up the other one that just appeared today, one, one, zero, five, four, nine?
Perfect. Do you want to name them so we can?
It's not my map to name. I think that came from Nathan and Jean Wong.
Okay, so let's, let's.
I, I don't even know what it looks like, so I, I can't.
Well, we're calling it a letter after, so we can.
Madam Mayor, let's just discuss as many as we can without, you know, taking it to the next level, if you don't mind.
And, and Madam, if I may make a suggestion, I think we discussed earlier that we're not going to name them in a specific way, like the county bit, so.
We just want to identify them, so.
Understand.
Okay, so this is, whether Schneider's, is this a new map from today?
This is a new map from today, one, one, zero, five, four, nine, that was discussed. And when we look at this plan, the total plan deviation is actually outside of the ten percent range, but it's something that could be adjusted. Um, and uh, we can look at it's, it does have a fifty-five percent Asian district. That's what it looks like.
Councilmember Schneider, did you have a comment on this? Is this, were you asked to pull up?
Well, yeah, just because two public members brought it up and I hadn't looked at it. But to be honest, uh, Mayor, what I did for each map was dive into it, scout around, look at the street, see how they would be split apart based on the streets. I can't do that at a council meeting. I just can't.
No, that, fair enough, fair enough.
So that one, that map actually, I think, shows the Aura Vista cut on it, that little, you can see it between the green and the yellow, between one and two. Although this is the first map I've seen that's tried, I think, I'm guessing, tried to keep Highlands together.
Okay, did you have any other comments on this one?
Not at this time.
Perfect. So we're gonna call that the Forty Niners, right? Did it end in four, nine?
Ended in four, nine, yeah, but we're only gonna elevate right now one to a lettered plan, that's one, one, zero, four, eight, four. And if you choose later on to not elevate it to G, then we can dispose of that if you want. It's your, your decision.
Councilmember Schneider, did you want to elevate this to H?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the Forty Niner became the H.
Okay.
Uh, Vice Mayor Pappin?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so there were some other ones um, identified by some of the speakers tonight. So can we bring some of those? I wasn't taking track, and I would prefer that we have a, avoid names of people who submitted them. Uh, just if we could bring up the ones that were mentioned, so we can take a closer look, that would be helpful. Does anybody have that information?
Vice Mayor, I, one of the ones that came up twice was one, oh, nine, five, one, nine.
Okay, that's one of them. Do we have any others? Was anybody keeping track?
I have another one.
I think it was one, oh, nine, five, one, six.
Yeah, it was one, oh, nine, five, one, six.
You're correct.
I have everything written down.
You're, you're correct, Ruben and, and City Manager, five, one, six.
Oh, it would be helpful, please, if we could take a closer look at those. Um, and I think it'll also help some of the.
Tom, do you want to give me the list? I had one, oh, one, seven, oh, seven.
Correct.
Um, and then I had one, oh, three, five, eight, six.
That's right.
Okay, let me find those real quick. And then I'll just bring these all up and we can look at them all.
Thank you.
Of course. Did you have any others, Tom, that I can bring up?
I did, there's uh, well, the two that we have just discussed, one, oh, nine, five, one, six, one, one, zero, five, four, nine. And then Mr. Teresi's map, one, zero, one, six, two, seven, that we've already discussed. And then um, both, uh, Ms. Wong, um, she reiterated the same two maps that Mr. Chen identified. That was one, oh, nine, five, one, six, and one, one, zero, five, four, nine.
Okay, so we did those.
Yeah, and then Mr. Jake Caruso, I had it down as one, oh, two, five, six, nine, but I didn't see that on the, so I don't know if that number's correct. I don't know if Mr. Caruso.
He mentioned it was down. But it, City Manager, it was difficult because you had to click three times to get updated maps. And if you didn't follow, it would have been easy to lose it, but I don't have that one in my notes either.
I don't have one, two, five, six, nine either.
I, I saw, I saw it under the draft maps.
Oh. Okay, we can go look for that. Generally, if they don't make it into the gallery, we don't grab them.
So is Jake still on?
I think, I think they're trying to locate it right now.
Yeah, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm still on, if you can hear me.
Do you have your, do you have your number, Jake?
Well, it was one, oh, two, five, six, nine. I actually submitted it uh, via email uh, a few weeks ago as well. It, it showed up and it was labeled with my initials for a while. It's, but I mean, one, oh, nine, five, one, six is pretty similar. Map D is pretty similar. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, does, I guess it's um, Vice Mayor, does that suffice if it's similar? Because we can, we can make.
Totally, I mean, just if, if we can see them, then.
Let me, I'll go ahead and share my screen.
Sure, thank you.
It is under the draft maps. It's there. It, it actually is, is similar to well, it's similar to a couple of them, C, D, but, but we can look at it. I want to.
So this is one, oh, nine, five, one, six. Um, let's just look real quickly at the deviations. Deviations are a little bit outside of what's allowed, so they're at five point eight percent total plan deviation. Um, but they do look rather, you know, neat-looking um, uh, relative to some of the other plans, but, you know, really is up to the council to see how they feel like it deals with the different neighborhoods. Uh, the one, oh, three, five, eight, six came up a couple of times. It was also labeled Amy Map One, and I think some people were referencing it in that way as well.
Okay, again, let's try to avoid names here.
That's fine. Um, and then this plan has a deviation that's just outside the, the allowable. It's a ten point one percent, but again, you know, moving one or two census blocks might fix that. In fact, it looks here like there's a census block that is not selected, that we'll have to select and clean it up if we wanted to make this into a draft plan with a letter. Um, we would do that. Um, and we could look at just like make, figuring out a way to potentially balance these, because right now that District One is a little bit too underpopulated. So we might be able to figure out how to grab something from Two, uh, which is almost perfectly populated to get that population balance, but doable to fix that.
How, how much would you have to, just out of curiosity, grab? Because as um, Councilmember Schneider noted, there will be some, again, we're not supposed to contemplate for growth in that area in the future.
It, you'd have to grab very little note, very small numbers. Uh, the district that's underpopulated by seven point one percent is only short three hundred and thirty people. So you'd want to get that three hundred and thirty people down to like, you know, two hundred and twenty-five people or something like that. If you had that within, so if you were to move a hundred people from two to one, you would be back, you would be fine.
Or, yeah, um, so interesting, okay. Uh, then what was?
The third plan is the one, oh, one, seven, oh, seven, which has, like, this is a lot like F, obviously.
Okay, is there uh, just what, whatever the other council members say, trying to narrow down the grouping here? I mean, the effort that went into all these is wonderful and I would really like to try to evaluate them more so.
Well, this one, oh, one, seven, oh, seven is F.
It is, yeah, let, let's, let's hear from Councilmember Holliver first and then the narrowing can begin, if you're okay with that.
Oh, I'm totally fine with it. Thank you.
Ruben, you're up. Councilmember Holliver? You're muted.
Sorry, I had to step away for a second.
Are you all right? You're, are you ready? Yeah, no, I mean, yeah.
Um, okay, so just in terms of, uh, I mean, Mr. Mitchell, I don't know how you do it. Just looking at the twenty or thirty or so maps here in Millbrae, uh, your head just goes spinning and spinning. And I, I generally, I think I like looking at maps in general. I'm somewhat of a, not a geography major, but I generally enjoy the geography and studying maps throughout my life. But I, I don't see how you could do it all day, every day, and so many different jurisdictions that you do.
Only once every ten years.
Yeah, that's true. Um, in terms of the ones that caught my eye, I had um, originally was interested in map C um, that the firm came up with. Um, the one that was posted today that Councilmember Fung mentioned, one, zero, one, one, zero, four, eight, four, actually, I think it was posted about five or six times under different names and numbers. Um, that one is pretty similar to map C, but I understand what Councilmember Fung described, that, that there are some, I think, improvements, such as using Millbrae Avenue as the dividing line um, for the uh, Mills Estates neighborhood. And the other one that caught my eye as well, that I was, I think was quite, quite creative, was um, number one, zero, four, three, nine, four, um, which had sort of more of a, like a hub and spoke type of model, where each of the districts sort of centered around a central point. Believe that one, you know, when you look at it, it comes across as not being contiguous in one area, but I think that can be easily fixed because there's a large census block that sort of encompasses and encircles the Marina Vista neighborhood. There aren't actually any houses in that part of the census block. So if you split that census block, um, it would not affect any of the demographic numbers or populations.
Could we see that one, please?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I wanted to see that too, because I don't think we brought that one up yet.
Yeah, let me vote for it again. One, zero.
Four, three, nine, four.
Yeah.
That, I think that's the one that has a portion of the east side being like an island, right?
Yeah, it has a non-contiguous part. We talked about this one earlier, um, not in, in depth, but I discussed it in the presentation. It has this non-contiguous part up here.
Correct. Uh, I, I believe that could be very easily fixed, um, because I believe the narrow strip that surrounds that island um, does not have any housing at all. Um, the northern part, I believe, was an empty area um, where the uh, the canals drain for the day. And then the eastern part is the Marina Vista Park. So I think if you were to cut off that district at the southern um, part of the island, it, it would not affect any of the demographic um, numbers.
Um, I, I think that's correct, Paul. A, as, as the council member said, this is all open space or transit right-of-way. So open space there to the north is SFO property.
This is, this is where we have to go scream at the Census Bureau. So if I click up here in this unpopulated area, look what happens. It grabs all this going all the way across here.
Right.
To what would be the F district here, creating a non-contiguous. So you'd have to do that. You'd have to, again, do a census block split or something, because this would make.
And that's all public land, all, everything in red is public.
Well, but there's. I think 268 people, though.
Right. I, I believe if you were to split that district kind of in the, just south of where the island is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I believe all 268 people would be in the southern portion of that, um, census block along Aviador. Yeah, it's basically, I think the northern half of that census block has no population.
Yeah, so we would have, if you were to choose this plan and say that's what we want to do, we could probably do with a census block split. And then you can rewind to my speech before. But is, you're doing it for based on rational, high, high-ranking criteria, so you're not going to get as much pushback from me.
Thank you. But I do like how this, uh, map, you know, integrates neighborhoods on the east and west side of El Camino. It has kind of a central meeting point where, um, you know, you can walk from within a matter of a minute or two, touch all five districts, um, in that, on foot in that central area in your central park. So I think this is one that merits further consideration.
I agree with that.
And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliver. Okay, so Councilmember Schneider, is this your hand up again?
Um, or is it, the only, I would only add for one oh four, three, nine, four, the way I tried to figure out neighborhoods being split, that one did a better job in splitting fewer neighborhoods. That's probably what I can say. I, I have to think more about including the Highlands neighborhood with the Bayside Manor neighborhood. And I know it's not, I know we're looking for minority electability versus somebody from the east side getting elected. I think it weakens the east side's ability to get elected by throwing it into, um, the west side of town. I don't think that's one of our criteria that we can use.
It's not about the election, please. It's about diversity and everything else that was.
It's about the ability, uh, the electability of a community, the ability of a community to elect a represent, representative. And the reality is, we've never had anybody from the east side. It's a historic fact, so.
I think that if we listen to our constituents, they all kind of like the El Camino line. But maybe I heard different. Um, okay, so we have a job to do, guys. Vice Mayor Gina, pop in. I'm going to let you.
Thanks. And I, and I just want to try to bring this together here. So I was talked about how many maps and, you know, I would really like to evaluate the ones we, that were brought up tonight in greater detail instead of, you know, just, I, I know this sounds, I, I don't want to narrow it too much. I really want to take a look at what we've mentioned, um, in depth, so.
So what, what I, what I would suggest, Vice Mayor, is at this time, if we each come up with a ranking so that we could address the top three, how's that? If everybody takes a top three.
I just, I'm, I'm not just not comfortable with that. I mean, I really need to take more time, and maybe that's just me. It's just.
More time for what?
To look at the ones we discussed tonight in great detail. And, um, then I can narrow it down. I just, I'm, don't feel comfortable in this position right now to narrow it down to three and, you know, disregard. So I'm, I'm just, I couldn't do that at this point.
So maybe, um, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but you, this is a tough job, and we got to do some, make some tough decisions right now.
That's why we make bucks, right?
Yeah. Uh, City Manager, could you maybe explain to this council? Um, I think I know. I think I've heard it a few hundred times. But we kind of are on a little bit of a deadline here. And, uh, we need to come up with this decision by the end of the month. And would you like to reiterate that for us?
Yeah, sure. Thank goodness for that question, Mayor. I thought you were just going to have me pick one.
Yeah, thanks. That would be for all of us.
I know this is challenging. You know, all the council and community is tough. Um, but we do have a legal deadline, and that legal deadline is, is, uh, is March 1st. Um, and so we, the way we have it scheduled is this public hearing this evening. We have another final public hearing scheduled two weeks from this evening on the 22nd of February. That's the date that we had slated that the city council has to act um, on a final map to hit that, uh, legal deadline of, um, of March 1st. We do have a little bit of float, um, obviously between tonight and the 22nd. Uh, and then we have that one week after the, um, public hearing date of, um, of the 22nd. So between now and the 22nd, and then that one week after the 22nd. But every public hearing, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, we must publish maps that the city council is going to consider seven days prior to the public hearing. So that means if the 22nd, if the city council continues on the 22nd to March 1st, which is the last date, we have to publish those maps. Let me look at the calendar. I believe on the 22nd.
Yeah.
Um, for the seven days. So the 22nd i- i- is a very critical date. Um, we also have a deadline for any member of the public. The final date to submit maps is the, uh, is this Thursday, the 10th. Um, because we need to give redistricting partners time to review the maps for, um, obviously, uh, all legal compliance and uh, uh, compliance with CVRA. And so, um, if we, 10th is the final deadline. Gives us a couple of days to review the maps, um, and then publish those maps, um, the Tuesday, one week prior to the 22nd. So everything is getting very tight a- and critical. So the, I hate to say it, the more work we can do tonight, um, the easier it will be as we get to that looming legal deadline. Um, but you do have some room if you want to have another, even a study session. Paul, I think legally, can we have, you know, a study session rather than calling it a public hearing? A- and, and then that way we don't have to notice maps between now and the 22nd?
I believe that you can. I mean, you have had your required public hearings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You certainly can get together in a study session environment if that would help this council uh, focus, you know.
So Council, I just, I think that, that I would like to lead this a little bit forward. And Vice Mayor Puppin', I, I understand your concern, and it's never going to be like picture perfect. It's a huge decision. And we have plenty of great opportunities here with everybody that's engaged with this. But we, I would like to see this council at least narrow it down. We have about 12 maps here tonight. Is that about right, Paul?
That we've been discussing?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we're probably in that ballpark. If you were just to say, let's bring back all the maps that have been mentioned, um, it would narrow the number of maps that you have, uh, but, uh, still have quite a few.
So I think that if we could, we don't have to vote on this to go forward by any means tonight, but can we please get your top three? That maybe, maybe one, maybe one or two will, uh, creamed, might rise to the top.
Uh, quick question. So like, we didn't just, I mean, nobody brought up A or B, so can we just get rid of those? Does that like?
Let, let's not do the negative. Let's do the positive.
Mayor? Oh, sorry, Gina.
Gina, if, if we could, if we could stick to, I mean, I think that we warrant the discussion on people that, uh, are discussing the maps that have been brought up.
So Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was going to try to summarize all the notes that I've been taking.
That would be amazing.
To take those 12 and say those 12 can be narrowed down because like, one, 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 zero, five, four, nine, we know that's map F, right? And there seems to be some consensus on map F. Um, map C and the revisions submitted by members of the community, we've called that map G. Now, so we've got F and G, and then the, and then I, I think if, if we can put those in a, you know, category. And then I think that there are two or three other maps then to select from if you want to get to three, and that is, um, is, um, the one oh one.
Well, for sake of.
One oh one, six, two, seven, which is, which is that issue right around, uh, Cappuccino.
What about the Amy map?
Yeah, the Amy map is, I, I didn't want to mention the name. I was looking for the number, but the Amy map.
Yeah.
One oh one, seven, oh, seven?
One oh one, seven, oh, seven, correct. Yeah. Um, and that's a lot like map F to some extent.
Uh-huh.
Um, so that's right. So one oh one, seven, oh, seven.
Let me.
One oh one, six, two, seven.
I think we meant one oh three, five, eight, six. One oh three, five, eight, six was the one that had the person's name associated with it. One oh one, seven, oh, seven was map, is map D.
Yeah, you know what, Paul, you're right. One oh one, five, eight, six is the Amy map. One oh one, seven, oh, seven is map F.
Does that five?
Mayor, point of order.
And that, may, may I just finish? And then the other one is one that Councilmember Holliver brought up, which is one oh four, three, nine, four.
Is that five, uh, City Clerk, I mean, Clerk, City Manager?
The, um, yeah, so one oh, one oh four, three, nine, four. Uh, the Amy map, one oh three, Paul, was a five, eight, six.
Five, eight, six.
Five, eight, six is two.
Uh, the one, six, two, seven. Yep. And then F and G.
And then F and G, right.
So that's five. Councilmember Schneider?
You asked me what my favorite three were, but those were just little side comments when I was going through 26 or 28 maps. I would have probably approached this differently. There are three that are identical. Get rid of two that, that's similar. Is it, I think Tom tried to say, well, this one's the same as that one. I can't think that fast. And flip back and forth between notes on that. So maybe it would help if staff could find those that are similar to it and make sure that we're not choosing five maps that all basically have the same shape because those are the ones that came up tonight, because I'm not ready to go through that. I really would have rather have said, for example, um, map one oh four, two, one, two, and one oh four, two, one, four are basically the same map, and they're almost the same as one oh four, three, seventy-three. So can we get rid of two, one, four, and two, one, two? But how do you tell the public, we just dropped your maps? Unless we very nicely say, because they're identical and they're the same as this one. And we at least call through some of them that way.
It, these are not being accepted, but they'll be, we're narrowing it down to make any sort of tweaks, and there will be public comment on all of this going, going forward.
Okay, well, until I see the ones that you've come up and compare them on the screen, I.
I can do that.
Fine, that'll be thought, no, it, it's. It's less. It, it helped when I had printouts of them. I do have printouts of a lot of them, at least A through F, and then a couple of the other ones, but flipping back and forth between the screen for a decision as big as this is very difficult.
Yeah, no doubt. This is a hard decision. But I think, I think with the, the everybody's comments and with the wrap-up that we just had from our City Manager, that we're, we have five maps that we can really work with.
A quick question.
Absolutely.
Did one of those include the one that, uh, Councilmember Holliver brought up?
Yes.
It did?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to check.
Because, yep, that was, that was part of the.
One oh four, three, nine, four is that map.
But which is also very similar to F.
I, I'm fine with these five, um, at this point in time. Again, we're not voting to complete it here, and we still have an opportunity to tweak. So if we could focus on these, um, and really give every council member time to evaluate them. Again, they can all be tweaked a bit.
Yep.
But I, I think I can live with that.
I, it would be, it would be great if we had three, but we have five. And so if we have five, I just want to warn everybody, there's not one for each of us. So if we could get, if, if, if we go forward with five and, um.
And, and we didn't do any of these maps, I just wanted to say.
No, no. City Manager, would it be possible that everybody could get a printout of all these? So that, um, we could be, uh, like, I, I, I really agree with Councilmember Schneider. It's so difficult to look on the screen. And if we could get the printout sooner than later, and if there's anything that is like misprinted with, you know, a few lines or a few streets or a few, uh, you know, icons or monuments that we might want to include for the presentation at the next meeting, that would be helpful.
And is there a way, because there was a comment about neighborhoods, I don't know if you can distinguish those, but since there was a heavy discussion this, tonight about making neighborhoods consistent, is that possible to add in?
What do you mean by consistent? I don't know that.
Mayor, I, I think, if I may, go ahead, but I, I think that, you know, Mr. Caruso, some of the comments about that on my notes, uh, Vice Mayor. Um, I think that we have that with map G. I think that we have that, uh, with, uh, one oh four, three, nine, four. Map F. Then the other two maps, I, I think, you know, so we have F, G. And then one oh four, three, nine, four is going to take a little bit of tweaking, you know, a- as we know, but, but I think as Paul said, that, that is definitely doable.
Um, and can I, can I mention one other thing, too? Is there a way to keep the colors and the numbers consistent? Just as pairing, you know, because you, you change a color and then it's the same there. It, I mean, just for a matter of review and simplicity, uh, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that's great. But, but back to City Manager. Yes, Gina, thank you. But, but City Manager, have you kind of looked at those five maps and maybe thought that we could, we can bring three together with some tweaking?
Yeah, I do. I, I think, um, one, one oh three, five, eight, six, uh, i- is slightly, doesn't meet the, the standard deviation.
Is that Ruben's?
No, that, that's the Amy map.
The Amy.
I think Paul had mentioned a couple hundred people need to, need to slide, but I think that that's doable. If, if that district, can't remember the district, but, but takes the kind of the central area and, and it's moved to the east.
Yes.
A little bit to shift that population. And then on, um, one oh one, six, two, seven, that's the non-contiguous map around Cappuccino High School, uh, that Paul had identified that, that, so those two, we could go back and see how that pans out. And then the other three are consistent, right? Uh, map F, map G.
Is it, is there, is there a possibility that F and G can be, uh, if?
They're pretty different in terms of, um,
Good.
the communities of interest. Um, and I, I think, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong on those. I think one was, one was, uh, had communities of interest that were more compact. Um, I think one may have been linear. Um, but map F is definitely a linear kind of, um, uh, east-west rather than north-south. So I think map F and G achieve the community of interest, but they achieve them in, in a little bit different ways. Um, I think map G.
G and C are similar, so let's just bring them forward instead of trying.
I think map G provides, I, I think that there was commentary about representation. Map, map G has three districts that represent the central business district.
Mm-hmm. And we would like to see that, I think. It's.
Yeah.
A perspective that's not in the other ones. So Madam Mayor, I think, you know, just kind of tweaking the five we have at this point. And again, people still have till Thursday. Um, we just need to try to do the best we can by looking at these in detail.
Yes.
We didn't, we didn't draw them, so we just, you know, we're trying to do the best we can here.
I think, I think.
Also, Madam Mayor, sorry, one more thing.
Yes, please.
Councilmember.
Yes, as far as three, nine, four goes, and I'm just looking at it again, you know, with that island, you know, being, you know, next to Bay Street. Um, we kind of need to know how that is going to get integrated into that Cyan district. I'm just going to use color here. Uh, I think this, I think it's being numbered as District Three here. So how soon can we get some clarification on how that is going to get integrated there, Paul?
Well, on this one, we do have this census block split that would have to happen. I would just suggest that, uh, I did go in and look here. And if we take this area and were to split that census block around where we drew that line, we could put that into three and treat that as not changing the population data table at all. And so we would denote that in the final report, and it would be on the public record if anybody had any questions. But we would utilize this, the data table here as if it was not adjusted, not changed, use that. But we would utilize this, the data table here as if it was not adjusted, not changed, use that same data table. And simply move that so that it would all be read around here. It'd all be part of District Three in order to bring that island into three. It would just be a census block split right here at the southern end of this census block right there.
Timeline. Sorry, Paul. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
And that would be the same thing we would have to do with this one. We would have to, if you said, this is a plan we want to have be our final plan. Then we would take those thirty parcels or so. Make a census block split for your final hearing, have the map with that change on it and. Uh, have to have some notation on the record that. Uh, the population data table we're using is still this data table, but that. Uh, we did move thirty parcels that we couldn't account the population for, you know?
Yeah, but as far as, you know, splitting the census block and what's your timeline on that, Paul? Cause we do need.
Given that we'll probably end up doing it on the backend, having it prepared beforehand, um, we'll probably do it this week, just have it done because. As was noted, hearing on the twenty second. Uh, you need whatever maps you're going to be considering and having adopted on the first up that night. We would literally finish a hearing like this at nine o'clock and get to Tom, the draft map that you're selecting for your final plan. Before midnight so that it can be posted to the website.
Right. Okay, thanks, Paul. Sorry, Madam Mayor.
No, don't be sorry. They're good questions. Councilmember Schneider, is your hand up?
Yeah. Again, because I, I see the point now, instead of the ten, we'll have five maps, but I'm going to still have to go look. At some of the other ones to see if I like them better than the five that we've kind of. Picked out of the air here. I'm wondering if the city manager could at least look at the ones on the website that are duplicates. Or are already represented by A through H. Um, and just let the public know that this map is now part of something else. And then I don't have to think about them. I, I, I can just take them off my list. I won't go look at them. I found it really frustrating. Having to go back three places, three clicks to be able to pull up each map. On that. So the website was a little awkward, but if we could at least. Bunch the ones that we're not going to look at anymore. Because they're already part of something else and the public will know that, know that we listen to them. And it would be less work for me in trying to, I, I, I agree with Ruben. When I got done yesterday, I was exhausted. Trying to compare these, trying to come up with a process to compare and then getting into the fine details like the one hundred, zero to one hundred block of. Hazel being left out of the rest of the neighborhood, that kind of stuff. Some way to evaluate these besides just population. My look at most of the numbers is that. Um, the Asian population will have a majority in all five districts. That's kind of how the numbers look to me. So. If they're already the, say, the highest percentage in every district, then what else are we looking at? And I did not have all the time to go look through the sixty or eighty. Communities of interest. I'd rather see them all listed. What do our public consider the communities of interest in Millbrae without me having to go through and open each dock? And try to figure out what it is they are saying. Because at least then I'm hearing what they're trying to do. So I, I just, I know it's a frustrating process for all of us.
Respond to that. I mean, we have done that.
Yes.
Councilmember, I mean, that's what Paul Mitchell and his firm. Have been doing over the last several months is taking all those communities of interest and, and that's. That's the basis of which these maps that are printed this evening or presented this evening have been formulated.
Well, that's great. Then what are they, Tom? Are they trees? Are they sewer systems? Are they school districts, school boundaries? I honestly don't know, other than. The existing historical neighborhood demarcations, that's the only thing that I can see in some of these maps. And then clearly, the public kind of move people everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say the central theme, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong. Of all of this across the city is neighborhoods. I would say in terms of the communities of interest that have been formed. Neighborhoods are strong and, and that's, that's kind of what has been the number one. Kind of variable is, is keeping the neighborhoods together.
Except Highlands. Except Highlands. Highlands is a neighborhood in Millwood that got carved up all over the place. You know, in Meadow Glen. Meadow Glen got carved up quite a bit.
And, and councilmember Schneider, in fairness to all of us, we didn't pull anything out of the air. I promise you that. We all, we all did our homework.
No, that's not what I meant. I meant that we're talking about these maps and I'm flipping back before, between my printouts, trying to figure out what, what. The Amy map is by number, you know, that's what I meant by pulling out of the air. Not that we're pulling it. It's trying to. If I had a bit, if we were sitting in a room right now and we had a big whiteboard up there or bulletin board, we could peg them. To me, as a visual learner, that's much easier for me than trying to hear it.
Fair enough. And I, I think that that's only, so if I can help here, because I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to stifle the, the, the whole process here, but if we have five maps now. And we're able to get them printed and they get to be tweaked. It might make the whole visual process a little bit easier.
Agreed. Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, push it down your throat by any means.
No, 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 I appreciate that.
I want, I want to, you know, we have a tough job here, so we need it, we need some sort of process. So the process by us together. Uh, coming up with five maps and then being able to get it printed and you can. Tweak it all you want. You should tweak it all you want and take in consideration everything that we've all heard from everybody.
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, two of the maps will be tweaked before we get them.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Because, because they have to. Yes.
Three will actually be tweaked. Uh, one will be tweaked to adjust the population. The other two will be tweaked for the census block splits.
Thank you. So they're going to do their job and then we could, uh, make some minor adjustments if permissible. Are we good with that? Councilmember Schneider, are you all right?
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm probably the one that's more willing to see a nine percent derivation than say a two percent. So.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't, I would not agree with you on that. I think, I think everybody's really, really here is really good. Everybody's willing to compromise. We want this, all five of us want the best for our Millbrae. And, and, and who, who, who defines the best, right? We don't know. So we have to take in consideration all the public comment. And we have to take in consideration the rules that we have to abide by and then we'll go to the vote.
Okay.
So I, I, I agree with you. We don't, I mean, we have some lenience in this, in this. In this rules and we're going to use it. We're going to use it. But we have to, we have to take a direction going forward.
Okay, thank you.
You okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, then I'm going to give direction with the council would like to give direction if we could bring those five maps. Forward and please, if we could get them printed, so everybody could. Mark them up. And could we please get them all color coded for Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yeah, there will be, I'll, I'll just caution that the coloring is based on whatever the number of the district is. And so there's always one district. I'll probably have Tom help us do that so that he gets the blame if. The district you think should be brown is actually red, but, um, we'll work with Tom on, on the numbering of each of these plans.
Yeah, just continuity.
To try to align them as much as possible. They won't be perfect because they're not all in the exact same spots, you know?
And then.
I kind of worry about Tom though. He does grow animals, you know, in the dressing.
The other thing that might be helpful, helpful, um, because when they do get printed, they get a little bit skewed. Is if we can put a couple monuments of our city, like, um, the city hall. And maybe, um, the library and a couple of the schools. So we can kind of see like what's in each district. That might be a little bit helpful. Uh, council, are you, is that anybody? Yes. Okay.
See what we can do. The, the map.
Yeah, sorry, Paul. Sorry to jump in. So we can do that after we get them from you. So we've done that with some other maps. So once we get those maps, we, we can, we can label everything.
Love that. Okay, cool.
City manager, um, at least one of the maps shows Millbrae School, which does not exist anymore. It's called Millbrae Estates. It's up on the top of the hill. Um, look for Lantos Court, that area. So the maps are still using. Buildings that don't exist. Although it has the streets.
But the.
It has the streets.
Yeah, because that's a subdivision, right? That the school district sold the elementary school.
Yeah, but the subdivision is called Millbrae Estates.
Okay. So Mayor, if I could sum it up, just, just for the record.
Please.
So we have, uh. It sounds like consensus for map F, map G, map one oh four three nine four. Uh, which is a census block split that, that Paul will work on. Map one oh one six two seven, which is also a census block split that he needs to, to work on. And then the fifth map is one oh three five eight six, and there's that minor population adjustment that, uh. He needs to work on. So those sounds like the five maps that. There's consensus.
Perfect.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the five maps?
Yeah, so, so map F. Map G, which is newly labeled, that was the one that came in today, one one zero four eight four. We named that map G. The third map is one oh four three nine four. The fourth map is one zero one six two seven. And the fifth map is one zero three five eight six. And for the public, that map F, I mean, it's been discussed, that's the. That's, that's the same map that, uh, Ms. Jean Wong. Had submitted and that, uh, Mr. Chen had also submitted for the public input.
I'm sorry, you said, Tom, that was map S?
That's map F. Yeah.
And, and so just, Madam Mayor, if I may suggest, just three nine four, we can call it H and six two seven, call it I and five eight six, call it J. You know, with the tweaking that needs to happen so that, you know, we down to FGH.
It would be.
And J.
I would, that would be easier for me. That's what I was trying to accomplish instead of, yeah. Thank you, councilmember.
No more names.
No, 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 no name calling. Wow.
It's not name calling. It's what the people named their maps. So it is what it is.
No, I mean, we're not name calling. Very good, guys.
Thank you very much.
Very good job. Paul, thank you very much.
Happy to help. Our whole team likes working with your city, so.
Yeah, well, you're not done with this yet, so.
They know that. We're on a tight time show, timetable though, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, council. I mean, that was a lot of work. That was. Good teamwork.
Exhausting.
Thanks, Joan.
Super, super good. Okay, let me go back to the agenda. Are we good with direction and? Public hearing.
Got to close the public.
We have, we have it.
I need to close the public hearing, yes.
Yes.
Alrighty. And we'll go on to existing business. And that would be number, item number nine, skate park renovation, design and landscape lighting, concept and award, awarding contracts. We, I'm sure have a staff report on this, correct?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I would like to introduce Ms. Mackenzie Brady, our Recreation Director for Staff Presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Mackenzie Brady, Recreation Director. Can you see my screen?
We see it perfectly.
All right, as Tom mentioned, this is for the skate park renovation design and landscaping, lighting, concept and awarding of contracts. So we will be going over the background for this project, the lighting and landscape concept plan, as well as the skate park design, the schedule for this project. The procurement process, the fiscal impact, and then the council action that staff would be recommending. In early fall of twenty twenty, the city applied for a land and water conservation fund grant for the Lower Spur Trail project, which is for the skate park and fitness court. And that was approved for submittal by the city council on January fourteenth of twenty twenty. This grant was approved by the National Park Service, allowing a project start date of June one of this last year. The fitness court portion of the project was finalized and the grand opening ribbon cutting took place, uh, this, this last fall, fall of twenty twenty one. The next phase of the project is the skate park renovation portion, which will use the existing footprint. And this design was created by working with the skate park user group. All of the wooden elements that are there will be replaced with concrete elements and new elements will also be installed. And there will be an additional section of flat ground with curbs and ledges. On January eighteenth of this year, staff presented the proposed design to the Millbrae Parks and Recreation Commission. And they approved via motion and moved forward on recommending this project to the council. In addition to the skate park renovation, as well as the fitness court portion of the project, the grant budget included funding for landscape and lighting design. And staff has been working with Gates and Associates to create this landscape design as well as a concept for the lighting plan. Here you can see the lighting and landscape concept plan. Just to orient you, this is Millbrae Avenue up here on the north side and in the middle walkway. Uh, when you walk down this, the skate park is on the left. As you can see, uh, that there's, this is the current skate park. And the, with the lighting in here, the, the blue dots are the current existing light fixtures. And so Gates recommended adding in. Uh, four additional light fixtures and those are shown in the orange dots. They're not actually meant to be on the skate park elements. It'll be off to the, the side here, off of the. Elements outside of the fence. Those light fixtures will be the Granger Lithonia lighting, which will match the existing lights, uh, within the park. And then there will be an additional light over, um, next to the fitness court. And so this is the fitness court that, uh, has been installed. Um, Gates recommended adding in blonde ambition grass on the west side and the south side of the fitness court, as well as coral forester grass and emerald carpet. And between the fitness court and the walkway in between, uh, the skate park and fitness court, they are recommending adding in a flexible lawn and that. Is a drought tolerant, um, Delta Bluegrass ninety ten. And there is existing, um, piece of fitness equipment here. So they, um, recommended adding mulch around that space as well as mulch, um, into the entry to the fitness court. And if you, um, have been to the skate park, you've noticed that there is a rock wall, um, on the northeast side of the skate park. And so. Gates is recommending to add a stone wall on the opposite side to match that. To match that, uh, that wall, along with accent planting in there as well. Right? I will continue on to the next slide. And this is the, the skate park, um, design that is being recommended. Um, this is an overview of the entire, uh, skate park, um, most of the skate park and up here where the little car is, that is Millbrae Avenue. And, um, so this element over here on the right side is what is shown up in the top right corner of this, um, area. Currently, this center element and this, uh, element over here are wood, so those would be replaced with concrete. And then two additional elements would be added in here as well as a grinding rail. You can see in the lower left corner, this, uh, element is what is shown in the center up here. And then, uh, in, in those, we're all part of the original plan with the, uh, grant application and additional, um. Portion of the, the design, um, that is being added in or requesting to be added in is this portion right here. So. Um, there is generally a fence around here and right here would be Millbrae Avenue and this would be where the walkway is, walking into the skate park. And this would be the entrance into the skate park. Um, just to orient you, and this wall right here is where the, the mural is in the donor wall. And so what is currently here is a planter box and that would be demoed and a lower curb would be added in with a flat section of concrete to allow for folks to use a skate park to. Uh, have a flat area to skate. And for the schedule for the skate park renovation portion, steel fabrication, um, if, if this is approved tonight, steel fabrication would. Start this month and it would take about a four week process lasting into March. And then, uh, we would have a break for spring break so that we are not, um, keeping the park closed during spring break since our youth would, uh, want to be using that space as well as for a spring break camp. And then construction would take place, um, over four to six weeks between April and May. Landscape and lighting install would take place between March and April with completion in early May. Independent on weather and supplies, this would allow the city to complete installation in early May. City contracts for public projects and maintenance work are governed by applicable state laws, including the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, which we call CAPECA. The Millbrae Municipal Code also requires city council approval for items that are purchased, uh, that are equal to or greater than fifty thousand dollars. And also, within our, our Millbrae Municipal Code, Chapter two point two zero, uh. Title Purchasing System, uh, that allows for exceptions to the typical public bidding process when the city can procure items from a competitive bid process. Uh, where, um, is part of a cooperative purchasing agreement to where the city would be able to piggyback off of another agency's contract. And then any projects that are sixty thousand dollars or less may be performed by vendors who are part of the approved vendors list that is maintained by the city. And then any projects under, or for two hundred thousand dollars or less can be procured. And then any projects under, for $200,000 or less, can be procured through this informal bidding process with CUPCA. For the fiscal impact, I'll go through the grant project breakdown. For the entire Land and Water Conservation Fund grant project, the total project cost is estimated at $598,700. The fitness court portion of the project was already completed, and that was $159,700. The skate park portion is estimated to be $319,000, with the landscaping at $60,000, and the lighting at $60,000, so that's a total of $598,700. The total cost of the second phase of the project is estimated to be $439,000, and that's an increase of $20,000 from the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant budget project amount, grant project budget amount, and what City Council approved the capital improvement program project as well. And so that $439,000 plus $159,700 is where the total project cost of $598,700 is coming from. With the source of funds, the Land and Water Conservation Fund is supplying $289,350 of this portion of the project, Prop 68 per capita funds, which were awarded on a per capita basis to Millbrae. That portion is $125,903, and then we would be requesting $23,747 from the general fund. $3,747 was already approved to come from the general fund, so that's where the additional $20,000 is. As I mentioned with the use of funds, so the skate park equipment is $120,000. The skate park element install and construction would be $199,000, landscaping at $60,000, and lighting at $60,000, with the total estimated cost for this phase of the project at $439,000, and that is after the fitness court, which was already completed, at the $159,700 amount, for the total $598,700. And the council action staff recommends that the City Council approve the proposed skate park design, as well as landscaping and lighting concept plans, as presented for the Millbrae Skate Park Renovation Project, and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreements for equipment, construction, landscaping, and lighting in an aggregate not to exceed amount of $439,000. I will take any questions, or any need for clarity.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Snyder?
Brady, good presentation. Some of my questions are going to sound a little silly, because I don't know the answers. With all the new concrete work, what, when they grind on concrete, what happens to the concrete? Or are they grinding on metal that can be replaced as it gets worn down?
There's steel coping that is on the edges of the elements, and so the skating surface is the concrete, and then the grinding would be on the steel.
So easy to replace when it gets worn down?
Yes, but the, I don't believe that it would be worn down significantly. The original coping is still on the skate park from when the skate park was built.
Okay, yeah, I'm not a skateboarder, I just know that they can damage concrete. This is going to sound really weird, but bear with me. The amount of concrete around Millbrae actually reflects and amplifies, increases the sound of noise from 101 and the airport. We've got data to substantiate that, so. But I also know that you can't have trees over the skateboard park, because they'll drop leaves or acorns, which are horrible for skates. What can we do to try to keep the skateboard park cool? And I'm guessing that all the concrete is going to be white, as opposed to a darker color, which would be hotter and a greater heat island?
Yes, so it will only be the elements that'll be replaced at the skate park, and so I may go back to that.
Yeah, they showed brown, but I assumed that that was so that we could see the difference, but I'm assuming they're going to be white, which is a climate resiliency component, just so everybody knows. If we stay white, it'll help reflect the heat and reduce the heat island impact, because this is going to be a heat island. There's no way around that. Okay, on that, we've talked a lot over the years about vandalism at the skateboard park. With the new lighting, are we also, are we improving the cameras, or are the cameras already there and they're working great, in terms of vandalism?
The cameras are already there, and part of the proposal for the lighting is to run conduit to all the additional lights, so that we can add cameras in at a later time if that is needed. So we are planning for that in the future, if it will be deemed necessary.
Great. And then if you could go back to your first slide, the landscaping on there, I'm wondering, within the budget, I can barely see the plants, but I'm assuming they're drought-tolerant? Are any of them pollinator plants? And is there any way to create the landscape area as a bioswale, a way to keep the water onsite, as opposed to rolling off onto Millbrae Avenue and into the storm drain system? So we're using the new landscaping as a demonstration to the people of Millbrae about rain gardens and keeping rainwater on our properties, as opposed to the gutter?
Yes, so they are all drought-tolerant, and as you can see, the accent planting around the stone wall areas, they, those are, those would be pollinator plants, so that's just an example, so we can specifically request any type of pollinator accent planting that would be in that location. As for the bioswale, I can look into that, that is not part of the approved grant project, and so that would be a change in scope.
Yeah, unless it just is simply, I'm thinking of doing it in my front yard, of adding a rain garden slash bioswale to keep more water in the lawn, maybe it won't be such a big deal, that would be lovely, that it wouldn't cost anything, but if you could check on that. I'm really glad, when you first showed the flexible lawn, that I thought you were going to talk about artificial turf, so I'm really glad to see that it's the 90/10, and this looks fantastic. Thank you, Director McKenzie.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hallibur. Oh, sorry.
A water fountain. Are we finally going to have a drinking fountain, then can we get the bathrooms open, if we can stop the vandalism?
There is a drinking fountain at the skate park. That is in working order.
That the fitness court, people have called me about the fitness court, saying, could they get water?
The water fountain at the skate park is meant to be for the fitness court users as well, which is one of the reasons that we put it in that location, so that they could share that space.
Good, good. Thank you.
Councilmember Hallibur?
I think Vice Mayor Pappan is next.
It's okay, she can wait.
All right. Couple of questions. One is a boring question, but about the procurement process. I'm still a little confused after reading the staff report in the presentation. So is there an approved vendors list that we have, that we're going to be using for this project, or is there another agency that has done a procurement that we're using?
Yes, so for the, yes, for the skate equipment, we'll be procuring that through a cooperative purchasing agency called Sourcewell, where we are able to piggyback off of another agency's purchasing of that. So there is a specific pricing for that equipment, and for the construction portion, we are able to do an informal bid, use, under CUPCA, with uniform cost accounting. And then for our approved vendors list, we do have, we did request bids from different landscapers and electrician, lighting contractors for the project. For each portion of that project is under $60,000. So we do have that approved vendors list, and those have, those folks have responded with their bids already.
Okay, so we do have bids that are all within the budget?
That are all, what, I'm sorry?
Within the budget?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then my other question is about the flexible lawns. It sounds like it's 90/10 mix, and what is that, the Seraphim's card? I'm wondering if, you know, considering that the rest of that area is all that timber mulch, it makes sense to just kind of leave it as is, and maybe just do the accent planting kind of around the edges. But I'm wondering if the lawn might kind of stand out a little bit compared to everything else that's around it, along that whole section of the spur trail?
We can definitely take that into consideration. The recommendation from Gates was to have that space, so that folks could stretch or do different exercises there, as if they were, like before, after they're using the fitness court, or maybe even the youth, after being at the skate park, they could hang out on the lawn, or community members could picnic, or, you know, maybe the youth are hanging out there while they're waiting for a parent, exercising at the fitness quarter, you know, parent there while they're waiting for their youth at the skate park. It's just essentially adding another recreational amenity, potentially passive recreation, or even active recreation at the site.
Okay, and then light fixtures, okay, so there is one on the corner there, but it didn't score it on the flexible lawn. That orange dot? Like a lighting fixture?
Yes, yes, it is.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pappan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great proposal, I'm very excited about this. I want to keep it going on track as quickly as possible here. Did want to mention too, that if there, because we have like underground streams and all that stuff, bioswells and things like that, if you just touch base with CCAG, sometimes they have some funding for that, but by no means slow anything down. I will agree, the lawn is great, I would like to keep the lawn. You know, for that matter, we could have croquet or something, future event. It just adds more flexibility here. With all that, I would call for the vote and recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one comment, if you don't mind, Vice Mayor, and then we'll.
But you can wait. No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
Two out of the box. McKenzie, I love this project, thank you so much. Just thinking, like, if we had a little enhancement here, so to speak, those existing light fixtures and the new light fixtures, is there a possibility we could get like an outlet for some sort of PA system, maybe if there was ever a contest or skate, you know, something that we could plug in and have speakers and amplify? It'd be kind of fun, or even music, for that matter. So if the light fixtures could have some sort, I don't, I guess it's a, just an outlet, right, of some sort?
Yes, there is an outlet on the building there, actually, youth use it quite often to charge their phones.
Perfect. And then on the flexible lawn area, I mean, that looks like a great outdoor movie for teenagers or skaters, right? So if we could see if there's a place where you could possibly get like a screen of some sort that could go in and out and, you know, host something other than just the fitness court, you know, at nighttime, that we could make use of that in the near future.
That's a great idea, thank you.
Pretty small area.
Yeah, but you know, it's a small area, but, you know, small crowd.
I agree with the mayor, if it's possible to add another outlet or conduit, because, I mean, this is a great setting here, if we could have some competitions or events there in the future, that, you know, you have more than one, without adding additional costs, of course, that would be helpful.
Yeah, just, it.
I will look into that.
It just feels like some good, healthy fun, you know? All right, so you called for the vote?
I did.
I need a second, please.
I don't think we've had public comment.
Oh, sorry, thank you, Ruben. Any public comment?
We need public comment. Can we take the screen down?
Thank you. Is there any public comment? I don't see any. Eduardo, do you see anybody? I think we're good.
I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Thank you. So we have a, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Can we call for a vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Hallibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappan?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Leva?
Aye.
The City Council approves a proposed skate park design and landscaping and lighting concept plans as presented for the Millbrae Skate Park Renovation Project, and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreements for equipment, construction, landscaping, and lighting in an aggregate not to exceed amount of $439,000 by a vote five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no new business. We are at 9:25. We'll go to council comment. Please, council, limit your comments to three minutes, just like the public limits their comments, and we'll start with Vice Mayor Pappan.
Well, it's quite ready, but I just wanted to thank everyone. The Lunar New Year celebration was great. Congresswoman Spear was there, Assembly Member Mullen, Supervisor Canepa, it was just a wonderful event. Good thing to bring the community together, so that was great to see. Hopefully, we can have many, many more. And I wasn't ready for anything else, so have a great Gong He Fat Choi, yay, for the Year of the Tiger, for those of us. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Fung?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, thank everybody coming out of the Lunar New Year celebrations, an excellent event. Thank you, all the staff, all the sheriff deputies who showed up and keep everybody safe. I think we had at least, what, 20 sheriff deputies there, keeping everyone safe. Thank you very much for doing that, it was an excellent.
I think they enjoyed the food, too.
Yeah, well, everybody did, I'm sure, not just the deputies. I myself is one of them. And so as far as Peninsula Clean Energy, they just approved the e-bike for everyone program, they reapproved additional amount, which is totaling up to about $300,000. They would be able to support approximately 300 additional bikes, you know, they're really pushing this e-bike program throughout the entire peninsula. You know, I think also Millbrae has its fair share of rebate being issued to our residents as well, so it's nice to see these programs being done. Some of the key modification that they did is that, you know, they're going to require these e-bikes to be at participating bike shops, and they increased the rebate amount from previously 800 to 1,000, and they also increased the cap for these e-bikes from $1,800 to $3,000, which is key. And in terms of try to help push the cargo bikes, because they tend to be on the higher side of the price spectrum, so. And so they also have a number of interests, raising the amount to half a million as well. So they have income eligibility guideline, everything is online, so you guys can visit, but this great program, I'm glad we are able to approve that and put that together. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hallibur?
Hey, thank you. Again, yeah, great event this weekend. So I attended the CCAG Congestion Management and Environmental Quality Committee meeting. There was discussion about the upcoming O-Bag 3 Call for Projects is coming up in, I believe, in May. And the priority will be for the PDAs, the Priority Development Areas, which are mostly around transit stations, Yalkamino corridor, for road projects and bicycle and pedestrian projects, since our staff is working on that, and trying to put in those projects together. So I also did, also attended the Library JPA Governing Board meeting yesterday. There was a discussion about upcoming, both the existing budget and budget, and some discussion about the summer learning program, which was enhanced last year, and hope that some of those enhancements can go forward. Also, perhaps using the library to help with mental health issues, that was part of my board numbers. And there's also a survey that was recently done, and approval ratings on local locations for the white, kind of library systems off the charts, it's like 97% positive view in the local libraries, so that was very positive to hear that. That's all that I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. My assignments are generally front-loaded at the beginning of the month. So the Culture Arts Committee would like to have the, hopefully, back-in-person art show the weekend of October 15th. So if Park and Rec could also consider that. They are also working with the professor from Skyline College, trying to identify a wall, a private ownership wall downtown for the mural, with the hope that if we can get an owner down there, they can get an owner to approve, the mural might start going up in April. The CCAG B-PAC, I'm the vice chair of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee at the county level. We began the scoring process for the 12 applicants, one planning applicant, 11 project applicants. We're going to have to cut $1.5 million of the grant monies, and then that will go to CCAG. one and a half million dollars of the grant monies, and then that will go to C CAG in March for that. Community Enhancement is working with staff to identify the, all the steps for rolling out Adopt a Spot. If you remember, it's in their work plan. It allows Millbury residents or businesses to adopt a public space and ensure that it looks good. So a lot of what it looks good is in part of the work that they are doing. You know, is it, is it plantings? Is it whatever it might be, littering and things like that? This is likely going to come to city council in April. It may push a little bit depending on staff availability. Last big issue at SFO Roundtable Noise. Kathleen Worthington has long been Jackie Spears representative. She is retiring. Brian Perkins will now be our Jackie Spear representative at the Roundtable. As you know, Brian Perkins is working with the city now to help with landing lane. So actually, it's kind of nice that he'll be both the noise person and all of the other SFO issues on that. Generally, though, in, in terms of the noise Millbury is left with, the Roundtable last year only allowed for two meetings for the type of noise, even though we had just completed a study, so we really haven't been able to dive into the, a deep dive into the study. Right now, they still only have it for two meetings, but that is under negotiation. But, you know, basically, the Roundtable is there to approve what SFO wants, and that's not the original intent of the Roundtable. The Roundtable was to represent the people, especially the people most impacted by all forms of noise. So we'll see what happens in twenty twenty two.
Thank you.
Oh, and finally, yes, it was a great weekend, a great event. And the Rotary, unless you're going to mention Rotary, the Rotary fundraiser, Lunar fundraiser is this coming Saturday, the, or coming up on the eighteenth. I know I mentioned it last time, but buy your tickets. It's their main fundraiser.
Perfect. Thank you. So I'll just finish with again, I'm, I think the concession of the five of us was we had a great, great day on Saturday. And you know, we all, we all thrive and we all, all campaign. And we all want to represent that Millbury is a destination, and yet this Saturday, Millbury was the destination to be at. We had great representation. We had great constituents' participation, and we had great fun. So I thank everybody that participated and worked so darn hard to put that together, because it was a grand old time. Thank you so much. And I think we'll close with our city manager. His hand is up.
I was going to mention, Mayor, on, on that note, just, you know, for the council and the public's interest, these festivals are great because two businesses that have stores in other cities, but they had booths, want to now open a business in, 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 in Millbury. So we've got two businesses that we're working on recruiting as a result of the festival and the exposure. So I just, I just wanted to share that. So that's great.
Perfect. It was awesome. Thank you, council. Tonight was a hard night. We've got some hard decisions ahead. And with that being said, get some rest, because we gotta get back together soon. And with that, I will move to adjourn. So moved.
Thank you. Good work.